Okay, we'll call to order the March 12 meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. Chair's remarks, nothing right now. We're probably gonna have Butterfield come back in for a change of use. Or a site plan amendment really, to add a use to building number one to change of use. So that will probably have coming in within the next, well, I don't really know with everything that's going on. I'm not really sure when we're gonna be able to meet. We'll see what the next few days bring. So, social distancing, that's just, it's probably gonna need to be. We don't have the minutes, so we don't have those to approve. Do I have anything from the members? Okay, with no correspondence. So we'll go straight into old business. We have 20 to Boulevard, application for a change of permitted use in site plan. Per 134-8 of the code, permitted use from residential to mixed-use residential tourist home. Okay, so we got the, you know, the conservation easement that's attached to the property as well as, I thought Jeff said, oh, this is what he put it up. So the site plan. I did wanna say that when we spoke about the number of units, it's limited to three. Actually, because the R3 does not allow, and I apologize, actually, we had not done any code review. We had just gotten the application. I hadn't gotten the village attorney involved, because I didn't know if we had escrow established. Although I haven't gotten involved yet, actually. But in the, in the R3, it allows tourist home, and tourist home is one to three rental units.
Didn't know that.
Yeah. Anything three or more is a hotel, and hotels are only allowed in the B1.
Okay.
But, but three rooms are allowed as a tourist home.
I thought it was five, not sure why.
Yeah, and I didn't, I wasn't even really paying that close of attention, because Jeff was here, and Jeff had done the referral, because Jeff was our secretary that night. So we definitely wanna correct that right away. So obviously, you'll probably want to provide parking anyway, because you have, you're gonna need additional parking just for, you know, for the family, for family and guests and all of that. So, yeah, so tourist home is up to three rooms, so I imagine you wanna do three.
We do. Could, could you send us the text of that? Could you email that to us?
It's the U, yeah, sure, it's the, it's in the zoning chapter.
It's, it's on the, on the website?
Yeah, we can go through it right, yeah.
Sure.
We can look at it right now.
I'm not sure why I got the wrong idea. No worries.
So, R3. Okay, so these are the permitted uses in the R3. Oops. All uses in an R1. Hotels are not allowed in R1. Two-family, multiple dwellings, tourist homes. Memberships, clubs, lodges, except such the chief activity which is a service customarily carried on as a business or primarily for gaming, like a club or a lodge. The special u, by special use permit, same as under an R1. I don't think there's a special use for hotel on the R1, but let me take a look. So what's as of right is a tourist home. Let me see about the R1 by special use.
I'm on the Village of Cold Spring code. This is listed under where?
It would be zoning.
You're in the zoning chapter in 134.
Okay, okay, we've got the zoning chapter.
134-8 is where you were, or now you're.
Is that where I was?
You were there.
Yeah.
134-8.
134-8.
Yeah, so what you wanna look at is the uses allowed in the R1, in the R3?
134-8, is that where I should go?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you. Two, three, four, seven, eight. All right.
Permitted uses in an R1. Hospital sanatorium, nursing homes, senior housing.
Municipal government.
I'm just, I think I'm in, no, this is, that's actually before I.
Oh, okay, yeah, that seems like a lot of different uses.
Yeah, and that's, that's gonna be the, well, no.
It says three tourist homes. One uses R1, two, two-family, three tourist.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is special use. There, it doesn't, it isn't there for, which makes...
Yeah, sorry, I missed it, 'cause I was, I looked through this.
No, and Jeff, and Jeff got it right. The referral is correct. Jeff or the building inspector, I'm not sure who did the referral, but they did it for tourist home.
And then I was just looking where the text of what tourist home definition is.
If you do a search for tourist home, it's a defined torn.
In this document?
Yeah. Oh, well, I don't know.
'Cause I'm at 3-8.
Hold on a second.
And it just says 1, 2, 3 tourist home, and that doesn't clarify, doesn't clarify. And this is what I looked at, so.
Tourist home is defined in 134-2B.
134-2B, perfect. One, two.
It's interesting, actually, it really should be two rooms. There's actually a conflict in the code. The tourist, tourist home goes of not more than three, but then hotel is three or more. So if you go to three, you're both of them. So, but we'll go with what the code says, which basically says you can go up to three.
Wonderful, thank you.
I don't, they'll probably fix that in the code update committee when they adopt the new code, because obviously you don't wanna have two things that have an overlapping requirement. I'll do a little bit more research to see if it's, if there's any way to do it. Would you wanna, now, the thing with the special use permit in Cold Spring is that it can be revoked, and it has to be renewed every year. So an as-of-right use is always much cleaner and safer, because it is just, it is just that. It's as-of-right. You basically just have to come in, get the site plan updated, get it stamped and signed off, and then it's yours, and there's no really kind of questioning. A special use permit can be reviewed annually and revoked, right? So you, and I don't even think, I don't think you can do a, if I recall, even tourist homes in the R1 have to have a state route frontage. They didn't want them, they're really just supposed to be on, you know, byways and, you know. No, 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 I think it's my fault. Been attending too many meetings, other meetings, really earliest meeting. So.
I was just curious, we, David and I attended the meeting run by the mayor, by all the people in town running Airbnbs. What sort of permits do they, it was in the firehouse?
Yeah, so that's, that's moving along.
What permits do the, all those people have?
Well, they haven't gotten that far yet, you know, essentially.
Many of them who stood up sounded like they'd been doing it for 10 years.
Well, because it's, it's, it's happening, you know, under the radar, not, but not very far under the radar. So the, what's happening is the.
So are they in R1 zones, a lot of these people doing Airbnbs?
Right.
'Cause they sounded like they were on Main Street?
Right.
It's a mix.
Running out of their houses.
Main Street's, Main Street's the B, is B1, so Main Street's at the issue, it's really, it's all the side streets that are R1.
So all those people are not allowed to be doing what they're doing according to this? I mean, I'm just curious, I'm new to town, so I.
The code is, the code is somewhat silent on it, but I think if you interpret it strictly, it's, it's not allowed under the code, you know, I mean. So people have been doing it just because it's very difficult to enforce. And the village is now, as every municipality is looking at it, is trying to figure out a short-term rental.
So how many people have, like us, applied for permissions?
They haven't gotten that far, but I think at some point there will be permits, there will be inspections, there will be.
Who hasn't gotten that far?
The village, as far as a, a, a local law. They'd have to pass a local law.
Yeah.
As all municipalities are. They're trying to figure out, because obviously it's affecting, it affects a lot of different things. It affects affordable housing.
So under what law are we applying, if you say there is no law? Sorry, I'm.
You're.
You're not in the R1, you're in the R3, so a tourist home is allowed as-of-right. It's an allowed use in your zone. A hotel is not.
And it's a not-allowed use in R1? So all those people are doing it illegally?
No, I think it is by special permit, by special use permit.
It's, um, uh, let's see, you can get a special use permit, but you're, um, the, you're, uh, is it entitled, why do I use the word entitled? You have, there is criteria you need to meet in order to.
You're talking about the current code or what they're anticipating?
Yeah, the current code. In order to get a permit under the current code, there's criteria that applies. You have to be on a state road, 90, and, which means 90. And you have to, is that it?
If we, yeah, if we honor, yeah, we have to have frontage on a state, on a state road. It could be county road. Wow.
I thought they had to have parking.
Sorry.
Well, that's, that's what the news, that's what they're looking at now.
The current code is, it does not address parking.
So all those people who were at those meetings have never applied for anything and were.
There's nothing to apply for yet, because it's not anticipated.
Because you're saying this special use is something they could have applied for?
The, you are, so if you're in the R1 and you're on Route 9D.
Now I'm talking about the people on Main Street.
Yeah, but what I'm telling you is that you can apply for a special use permit to the, to the planning board for a tourist home if you are on Route 9D. And, and, and I guess it, and in R1, right? If you are in R1 and, and you are not on Route 9D, the code does say specifically that if, if the use that you, if, if the use you're interested in is not identified as a use allowed under the zone that you're in, that you cannot engage in that activity. You can't make that use of your home. So people who are, who are in R1, who don't live on 9D could apply for a zoning variance, right? You could sort of take that path. But there is no permit for that applicant.
They would have to come here to apply for a zoning variance?
They would have to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a zoning, a variance. And that would sort of be, I guess, a kind of a, a sideways in, to then, I guess, you could apply for, you could apply to the zoning board of appeals for a variance that would allow you to, that would give you a variance for the 9D requirement, right? So that wouldn't.
So the 9D people would have come to this board to apply for their special permit?
Yes.
Have you ever had one before?
Not while I've been on, on the board. And there, and the reason that it was written like this is because when the code was adopted, there was at least one rooming house that I know up on 9D.
Yeah.
And so it was just, you know, it was written to allow what existed, but, no, 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 you can't do it anywhere else, you know. But in, I don't know why R3, why, why would R3, was there a reason R3 included tour? I don't know.
Tourist homes are as-of-right in the R3.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where we started all this, which going down the special use permit is not permanent in our code. Some special uses, like the Adirondacks in areas, it's, it's permanent. It's, it's almost like a variance, it runs with the property. Here, in our code, special use permits are issued and can be reviewed annually and revoked. So it's not a, you know, yours is rock solid as an as-of-use right for three.
We're really glad we're applying.
I think the code update committee might correct that down to two, because it's weird that a tourist home can go to, you know, no more than three, and a hotel starts at three or more. So what's the third room in a?
But there might be minimums and maximums about those that.
Well, we'll only put half a person in that room. So right will be, will be good.
As long as you get in before the code update.
Yeah, which you are. I mean, your application is already in, it wouldn't really be, we wouldn't apply something. And that's gonna be way out there anyway. Okay.
We'll advertise ourselves as an approved.
Authorized.
Authorized, the only, the one and only, approved, authorized.
And also too, if you do get into a hotel, and I don't know if you had anticipated that, because I think pretty much, actually Marie reminded me of this at the, like Silver Spoon, right? Because they're on a, they're in the B1, you gotta have emergency pass, eatgress lighting, exit signs. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a different world as far as building code.
We're the nutritionists.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So you'd have to change the look and feel of your, of your house, yeah, yeah. You know, so I mean, you're talking about exit signs with emergency lighting, and, you know, that's what would be required in a hotel. So it's probably not something you'd wanna do anyway. Yeah, so three, three it is, we're all agreed. All right, so you've shown parking for. And then obviously it's up to the building inspector with respect to tourist home, but I don't believe tourist homes have any of those requirements like a hotel does.
We checked with our contractor, we checked with the building inspector. We specifically checked about sort of safety and fire and stuff like that, and he said we were fine, so.
Are you two stories or two and a half stories?
Two.
Two. Okay, yeah, you're fine. When you get to three occupied floors, you gotta get a, or even a half story, you gotta have a sprinkler.
Two. Ground, one.
It should, it should be fine, so we can, you know, we talked a bit about the neighbor notification. The only thing I'm a little hesitant tonight is to figure how to schedule a public hearing with what's going on in the global pandemic. I don't know where we're gonna be two to four weeks out. It's, it's definitely going to get worse before it gets better. You guys know, as doctors, this is a, you know, we're at the, you know, the low end of the bell curve, and we don't seem to be doing much as a government to be flattening that out. So we're likely gonna get a spike that's gonna overwhelm everything. That's just kind of what it's gonna be, it looks like. So I, two weeks would be, I don't think would make any sense. So maybe we could probably regroup and see where we are. We might even talk to the, the village council if we can, you know. I'm sure, we can at least share information and not draw conclusions via email. And we could even decide, I think, through email, and email you to say, well, we think we're okay to set the public hearing here. We just then give you a legal notice. I think, I'm not certain that would be okay. It's kind of unprecedented, but we're in unprecedented territory here.
Whatever works out for that, we're not.
Yeah, so, and I don't know, and the village may at some point, you know, start stopping, you know, public assembly. So we'll, you know, we haven't gotten there yet, but the next, you know, the next week or so is really gonna kind of be a, is gonna be an indicator of where this is headed. So I can speak to the village, the village attorney, just kind of ask him, you know, can we just kind of decide this in, you know, in a week or two via email, or does it have to be in a meeting? We may have to reassemble in a meeting if we can. Two weeks is probably just only going to be worse, not better. But we'll have to wait, across the bridge when we get there. Are you in a big hurry, I mean, for the? It's an as-of-right use, so I don't think you need to worry about.
My, is to be able to submit our paperwork to Scenic Hudson for approval. So if we had approval of the village, then we can move forward with getting Scenic Hudson's approval, getting this approval. So I think we mentioned the, um, may I draw the, well, here you go. No. This is our driveway, kind of wanders around sort of like that towards the house. And the house here on, this is Constitution, and this is the Boulevard. Our gate is there, and the people who live here are Eva and Bob Leonard. They're not, they're on the Big Mac.
Okay.
And they, you know, their house sits about here, and so if there's people, you know, driving down here from here or here, we have spoken to them and let them know. Because realistically, I mean, they would have, well, three more cars than normal driving down our driveway. And so we wanted to be considerate of them and discuss at a length with them. So that they're really the people that we're most concerned, because, I mean, the other people were not, not functioning. I mean, there's way more people going into Forge Gate here than, than would be going into here. The majority of the traffic on Boulevard is going into Forge Gate, but these people, you know, live around the corner. So we wanted to be considerate of them and have spoken to them.
What kinds of, what kinds of kind of impact mitigation have you done to address the, have you done any to sort of address the, I don't know, the noise or the visual impact to the Leonard's?
So we discussed with them what their concerns were, and Eva asked, would we be having any sort of large food deliveries like a restaurant? And we said no, because we would be, you know, making breakfast for at most 10 people, we thought initially. And then actually, when our family, we have five children with their spouses and seven grandchildren came, there would be way more noise and traffic from our family than there would be from when we had guests. And sort of, you know, just kind of talked to her and Bob. And that seemed to be it. She was, when we had our property excavated, Ava was concerned because people would U-turn on her lawn. So, well, you know, they're going into Forge Gate, or they want to U-turn, and they just driving would drop. So we asked our excavator to put very large boulders along the edge of her property, and we did it. He was there with a backup, so that she, and she seemed quite pleased, because the boulders stopped people from driving on her lawn.
Are they still there?
The boulders, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a new fence, I think.
Well, there's, there's a fence that's been there for about years, about years. We.
We've also let her plant bushes on our land to try to screen out.
She planted some bushes on our land. They dumped their leaves on our land because they have.
They provide you compost.
Provide us compost. So, no, I mean, you know, we said, look, you know, what are your concerns? Well, can we do the help? And that seemed to be what they were worried about.
Okay. Oh, good, good. I'm glad you were able to.
Oh, no, absolutely, we, you know, I mean.
So let's just.
It was there for a long time.
Let's figure out what the blast zone is as far as neighbor notification, just so we can get that out of the way. So this is, this is the Leonard's here, this, am I coming up? Is this right here? Well, the first, yeah. And where is, so Forge Gate isn't showing any of the.
Directly across.
Isn't showing any of the buildings, right? Oh, because there's no parcels, right? Because it's just a single parcel.
There, down here, along there.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, you have a nutshell, yeah. The parcels aren't show, I mean, I guess because we have parcels. Okay. So what do people think? I mean, I think that, I mean.
It's adjacent to everyone who backed up against the property. I mean, I would think that all of the neighbors, all the adjacent neighbors on Constitution, and then.
Maybe we should do this.
And 64.
Oh, so this is, I think this is 11 and 15. I think the last two buildings are 15 and 11.
Oh, actually, to answer your question about what we did about neighbors, so when you buy a property, you are allowed to legally reassess the property line according to the, where, where it is on the maps versus where people have moved out their fences. And because this was owned by Archie Campbell, who, you know, wasn't in a position to sort of look into this sort of thing, and then by Scenic Hudson for nine years, many people have their gardens encroached a lot. And we purposely didn't want to, you know, be unfriendly to our neighbors, and we're very respectful of that, you know, so that we sort of wanted to start off on a good foot and not.
That is good, but you should check with your attorney about adverse possession.
I understand, I know exactly what it's about. If they own it for 10 years, they then own it legally and.
Yeah, if you don't care, it trespass, right?
That is, but.
Okay, so if you're, no, as long as you're aware of that, just, it's a.
Not a lot of benefit with fighting with your neighbors.
But no, I, well, it all depends how much, right? It depends whether sitting on, you know, in a place you need or sitting on a thing you've never used, because you've got nine acres, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if you got a quarter of an acre, it becomes a different, you know, different analysis.
Absolutely not. We're just fine with whatever people.
Yep, yep. All right, so I think that, I think it's, I wish I had the addresses for, for like 11. I think it's 11 and 15 Constitution, I mean, not the Boulevard. Oh, actually, here's this.
But should we, do you wanna look, you can look it up later.
Yeah, I'd rather just get it, so we can, uh, let's see.
I haven't noticed their neighbors. They walk through every day. They're like, I know, it's not funny.
Is there a restroom?
Yeah.
Just to the left outside.
Okay, thanks. What the hell are these block and lots here?
What's that?
There's block and lots over there. One, two, three, four, five, five, six, seven, eight, and then it starts again, one, two, three, four.
Is it because that's a different district?
I think it's on the, that's on a different map around the.
The big map in the office?
Yeah, but they typically don't over, on the same street, if it don't have the same block number. You know, but it's probably just, or same lot number, rather, but it must just be. Must just be some old brown woman. Yes, I think H, that's the last building. Yeah, so I think it's 11 and 15. H, four. It's still 15. So is it G?
I think there are any G's on, I think there's. A, was it A and B?
Maybe 15's fine, it's the three second, but that's actually past the road, isn't it? Oh, no.
Fifteen, it's the one on the other side of the Forge Gate Drive.
Yeah, that's the last unit. It's three buildings, it's what it looks like, three buildings with their own connect. You think that's fine?
I think that's, that's fifteen.
Yeah, you don't think we need to catch, I think the other one is eleven.
Well, I, well, I think that there is, there's another set of buildings right across from B.
Constitution?
Yeah, right across from Constitution. And I thought that was, is that A is A and B?
Mm-hmm.
And. Let's see.
Yeah. Yes, it's eleven and fifteen. Oh, wow, that's not right.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it is, yeah. That's fifteen, cause that's the pool. Oh, that's fifteen? Why does it show a pool? The pool's not there, the pool's down there.
This is, um.
That's a building.
That's a building.
So it's this one and this one? I don't think we need eleven then.
Eleven is right across from it.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
This is the one.
All right, so eleven, the Boulevard, fifteen, the Boulevard.
The Forge Gate buildings across from. They, they know where they are, all of those. And then everyone on the west side of Constitution.
Yeah, I think so, because.
Is, um. Does your parcel go all the way down to the hill where the lookout is? Or it, it?
Oh, no, that's right.
No.
So.
They were subdivided, right? Well, not subdivided, but they did a lot line adjustment.
By Sinek Hudson.
Sinek Hudson retained that little bit of it.
Let me find out, let me find out where that is.
Quite a large part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we did the, we did the.
The original site plans I submitted last time? Do you have that? Big site plan with the whole thing?
What, oh, the, the lot line was on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Here.
Do you want me to go and, are they in the?
They're probably in the box, I can actually pull it up here, I think. Cause it was part of that foundry code viewing.
Yep. So there are some people on Constitution who don't back up on you, they back up on you.
Sinek Hudson, yeah.
I've never looked to answer your question.
Proposed lot line adjustment.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Oh, so it's one.
No, not much.
It's just the one.
Yeah, cause I remember it's a weird, very weird shape. So it's just the last.
And is that also, is that porch?
Is that what?
Scrub? Does he own both of those anyway? That's funny.
Dunno. I mean, at the point of the, of the map. All right, so. So it's just that one that's out.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Why is it out? Sorry, I just.
They, uh, so when Sinek Hudson, Sinek Hudson was gonna do a subdivision, then eventually did a lot line adjustment. They created that viewing platform from Foundry Co.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so they wanted it, they wanted it to be adjacent to, to the foundry. Whether they're, they were gonna make it part of the same property. So they wanted to be able to have, to be able to travel across to the other property. But they needed enough land to do that viewing platform.
And it included that lot.
So they did this kind of wonky.
Exact thing.
Yeah, to do a, you can do a simple lot line adjustment, as long as it doesn't create a new lot.
Okay.
You know, if you start with two and you end with two.
Is that the same?
That, this thing, yep.
This very bizarre lot land.
Right.
Yep.
Lot line.
All right, so yeah, so it's, so I think the neighbor notification would be eleven, the Boulevard, fifteen, the Boulevard. And then I think everybody on the west side.
Sounds great.
Of Constitution, minus the one that's outside, which is actually lot five.
Cause that's the one that's part of the parcel.
But if you want, if you include them, it doesn't matter, it's too hard to figure out. The best thing to do is you can go on to, um.
I have to do this?
This is yours, yeah, so, yeah, so what the neighbor has to do is the neighbor, wait, you're not gonna do it yet, cause we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to set this up for public hearing. But I wanted the board just to determine this, in case we can do the rest of it in email, right? What we decide, some of the boards have, it's some, you, the Renaco is kind of the blast zone, right? Who should get notified that something's happening on a property? Changes of use always have to go to public hearing in Cold Spring. So it's a change of use, it's an as of right use, but they still, they still, we listen to the public's comment as we weigh the, the factors. So part of it is neighbor notification. And it's, and under, under the law still, it's a certified return receipt. A legal notice that the lawyer will draft for us, which is basically just, you know, be advised that the planning board's holding a public hearing on a certain date. The application is for a change of use to allow a tourist home, right, in the R, in the R three, you know, at, at twenty to Boulevard. So what you want is so, the, the point of that is so people can have constructive notice to know that something's happening and then come and provide input.
So Jeff will have the list of everyone that he has to send the certified letter.
He does not send them, you do. Yeah, now the village clerk does not.
You said it, it's a legal notice from the.
We will give you a legal notice, we'll give you the text of that legal notice. And then you just put it in an envelope and you have to notify these people at least two weeks prior to the, to the hearing.
Great, can Jeff can provide me with the list of the names of who these people are?
Um, that's, no, he, he might be able to help you if he's willing to do that. Typically, what we, I direct people just to go to Imagebay, you know, the Putnam, the website, so then you can look at the property owners.
No, I don't know, so I'll write this down.
Um, and Jeff can help you, so, I mean.
Imagebay, it's called?
Yeah, so the Putnam County has all their property records online.
Yep.
So if you look for Imagebay, Putnam County, New York.
Imagebay, all one word, dot com?
No, no, that's, that's not the website, it's a, I, I can send you the URL, actually, I think I have your email. I'll send you the URL.
That'd be great, thanks.
Um, and you can, cause what you wanna do is you want it to go, this one should be fine. We have a lot of people, we have a lot of absentee landlords on Cold, on the, on Main Street. And so it doesn't make sense to send them to renters. You're probably gonna be, if you sent them to the property address, you're probably fine, it's probably gonna get to the property owner. Um, cause they're condominiums or single, single family homes. So, yeah, I think you probably could just use the addresses. I don't think you really need to go to Imagebay, you know, to go to the, to go to the county records. We ask people to go to the county records, cause typically what we see here are commercial applications.
Great, so the addresses are which numbers of Constitution?
We're looking at tax and lot map numbers, you have to look at the addresses, but the west side.
Okay.
Cause they all, they all, really what we do, a lot of boards.
I would drive down the road and look at the numbers on the mailboxes, that should work, right?
Yep.
And eleven and fifteen Boulevard?
Those are two buildings that have multiple units in them.
Great.
I think they're three building units that some have two per, two per section, some have, so there could be as many as.
So how do I find these people's names?
That's the Imagebay?
Yeah, I'll send you Imagebay, you can look at it that way, that's the easiest.
Cause I can find their addresses, but you need somebody's name.
It'll have the property owner in there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, all the, all the property records are there.
And how do I find all the people who live at Forge Gate?
Same thing, it's the owner, you're gonna send it to the owner.
Okay.
It's entirely possible that, you know, a couple of them are for sale, they could be flips, you know, so there's gonna be a property owner in there.
No problem, sorry about my ignorance.
No, 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 nobody's really supposed to know this stuff. It's not usually part of normal life until you go to do something. I'll send you the, I'll send you the URL for, um, for Imagebay. And that way then you can go into the property. If, what, you, let me show you really quick. Just so you know what you're looking at when you go to look at it. So all you do is you're gonna log in here, like, you're gonna start here.
Login Imagebay, yep.
For some reason, it's already logging me in. I'll show you, the login can kind of seem confusing, you just click here for public access. There is no such thing as really, it's, it's public in Putnam. So obviously you're looking into town of Phillips Town. And then you can do whatever level of information that you have. So if it's the Boulevard, you can just type the, it'll start to do a match, right? So you, you would look at the Boulevard, search. And there's you. And then, this is a weird thing about Imagebay, which is it has to be an exact match. And some they put in as the BLBD and some they put in as the Boulevard, so you gotta.
This looks like homework for grownups.
Yes, so it's, uh, it's, it's pretty simple, once you, once you get a, once you get the sense of it, so it looks like.
Most homework is pretty simple. I hate to tell you that, but maybe you don't remember school.
It is actually kind of fun, it's like, cause then you're like.
Really?
Yeah.
This, just having a glass of wine?
No, 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 they're not mutually exclusive, don't understand.
Exactly, it doesn't, yeah. So like, say you look here, so these, they, for some reason, they typed them all out, they didn't abbreviate, and then they put in the unit number. So you go to the property. It'll then show you the mailing address.
Great.
It'll then, over here is a tab for owner. So it'll show you that it's Donald Richard at, at that address.
Great.
Yeah, so I'll send you the link and it's.
Doing my best.
Yeah, and so that way, and yeah, certainly call Jeff and just say, I'll send an email, I'll CC Jeff on this link as well. And just say you need to do eleven, fifteen, you're not gonna do anything yet, but we just wanted to, I wanted to get this done here, so then that way we don't have to reconvene as a board.
So I do this after you've had your public hearing, correct?
No, 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 no. This is a neighbor notification to let them know two weeks prior to the public hearing. So I'll put this all in an email to you, um, and Jeff can certainly keep you, keep you straight on that as well.
I can copy paste the text you sent me into my letter.
Yeah, you're basically.
Sign me or it's signed the village?
Well, actually.
I think people usually just fold up the legal notice and put it in there, I don't think they say that it's coming from them. Yeah, but you, if you put your return address on it, you can, or you can just put the village.
Yeah. Yeah.
Typically, they literally just print out, it's, and that, you know, it looks very much like a legal notice you sent to a newspaper, cause it is. It's just, you know, it's formatted as if it's going into the classifieds, cause it is. Um, and so it's just typically a bar of, you know, five or six lines in the middle of a page, just folded up, put it in a number ten envelope and mailed off certified return receipt. And then you keep the return receipt, the, the mailing receipt, you know, the, the paper tear off piece. And you bring those in to make, for proof of, proof of mailing. The green card then, if you get them back, sometimes you don't get them back, people aren't home, they don't sign for them. You're not required to have all the green cards, but if you get the green cards back, bring those with you to the public hearing as well. What those are is to let people know that in two weeks' time, um, or more, not too much more, I think you're allowed to go one month. But in, in two weeks' time, there's gonna be a public hearing. And if they, and they have to, it's to be heard, right? So they have to get constructive.
Registered mail, is that correct?
Certified return receipt, not registered, yeah.
Certified returns.
Yeah, the green cards. And so it's just, it's, it's a process, it's part of the process of municipal law, especially village, that you notify them that this hearing is coming and this is, this is for them to come and be heard, if they have any comment. It's, it's part of the, it's part of, you know, village law, because then that way, if they have a dispute about what was done and said they didn't have constructive notice, those are used to say you were told that there was a hearing. Then they have, once this board takes final action, they have sixty days to file any dispute of that action. So if they turn around in ninety days and say, I don't like a tourist home there, well, then you've missed the statute of limitations, right? So this stuff is all timed to set a, to a paper trail to say you had constructive notice and you were asked to come and be heard. You, you know, you failed to do that, you know? And it isn't when, it isn't that you're in Europe for, you know, three months and you don't know, it's when you could have had constructive notice. So that's why the green cards are important, if you get them back. If they're not, keep just the white piece that they stamp when you mail it and tear it off. And then that way we know that you've sent them. And, and, and if anybody has any issue later, you go back to that to say, well, you had constructive notice, right? So if you have an issue with this, you know, there's a sixty day deadline under New York State law to file an Article seventy-eight to appeal a decision that we make or any of the boards make. So that's, it's in your best interest to make sure that that paper trail's good. You know, we hang on for, if you're here, you hang on for your own records. And then, you know, it won't be an issue, I wouldn't think, but you never know. We can't predict the future, especially now.
The only other thing I've ever had to do like this is when my mother died. You have to put a notice in all the local papers to make sure that there's no creditors and that kind of thing.
Looking for money, yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, so it is, and that's the same thing to notice, right?
It's notice, it's very similar in.
Before things happen that are difficult to undo.
Before anybody can inherit, you have to legally notify anybody in case she, similar thing.
Right, so things that are very difficult to undo, like get the money back from five people that weren't supposed to have it, I mean, you know, so you got notified.
Right.
You're supposed to come in here, you didn't do it.
Similar legal story.
So, yeah, so it's in everybody's best interest.
Absolutely.
To follow that. I'll send the email to you and to Jeff, so he can help you out anywhere needed.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Um, it's a lot, it's, unfortunately, it's a lot, but it's because it's a nine acre parcel typically, which is, you know, great, but comes with the responsibility. We, we typically do all the adjoining properties, so they do a join, you know, you probably aren't gonna be that far back. But nevertheless, they should be notified, it's in your best interest if they're notified, you know, for three fifty or five bucks or whatever it costs to send one of these things. Then that way then you've got a record to say that they, that they, they were given. I can't tell you the number of times you'll hear in, when there are disputes, when did you have constructive notice? And that's what it all comes down to. So that's what the green cards really prove, that it was mailed to them, it was mailed to the right address, there was plenty of notice. We then, on your behalf, that's what the village does do, what Jeff does do is put that notice in the paper for two issues of the newspaper. At the point we have a legal notice, then Jeff will give you a sign. And we set a public hearing, Jeff will give you a sign posted at the end of the driveway, probably on your gate, I would imagine, or somewhere near there. Just to say that the property is under, um, application to the planning board for a change of use and the, and the date of the public hearing. Okay, very good. Great, thanks, I'm sorry it's such a, you know, such trying times, but we'll figure out.
No problem.
Yeah, that wasn't my pandemic.
Do we come back?
Um, not just yet, I think we'll, we're gonna have to figure out what we're doing.
Email us when this all happens.
Yeah, so I'll talk to, I'll see if I can get ahold of the mayor or the, or some of the trustees to see what's going on with respect to village meetings and planning, you know, public hearings. Cause obviously it's a public assembly, certainly not five hundred, but, you know, but, um, you know, we're not New York City either, so.
On two twelve.
So don't worry about it, it does what you. And this position, and this position, you, you well know.
Yes, okay, so we'll hear from Jeff.
Yes, yeah, and we'll try to.
Until we hear from Jeff.
Yeah, we'll try, and we'll see if there's any, you know, if there's any, I mean, these are pretty.
Can we move forward with the approval from Sinek Hudson to say that pending the public hearing, we've gone through the process so that they?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no issue, because we're, you know, not we, but obviously the realities of the time that we're in right now are gonna be holding you up. I have no issue asking for a straw vote if people, I, you know, look, I think even if all the neighbors came in and had some objections, you'd probably deal with, you know, whatever they are, right? No, I think you're gonna have lights, no, we're not gonna have lights, so I think we need screening, I'll write, we'll put it in a straw. Right, you know, so those are the kind of things that come up at a public hearing, and I suspect that you're gonna wanna do. The fact that you're not making people move their fences means you, you, you understand what being a good neighbor is and how to get things done. So if anything comes up, so I don't really, I don't foresee anything, because it's an as of right use, that would keep this board from issuing. I'd be happy to speak to them if they wanna call me.
They're welcome to call us, we're welcome to find out. I mean, we feel direct communication, what's your concern, how can we fix it?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't really see anything, because of the size of the site, the location of the house on the site, you know, I mean, even if you do parties, you know, even if you, you know, if somebody wants to do an event, obviously you only have three rooms to rent, you know, we're gonna put that on the site plan. So, you know, but you do, you could do, it, it's no different than, you could even do a family event, you could have a large family, that could be louder than any, uh, any of the three guests who are at. So, but obviously you wanna be a good neighbor, so all that.
But you said you were also open to speaking to Sinek Hudson?
Well, if, if that helps, I don't, like I said, we don't wanna hold you up.
Just forward the paperwork to Sinek Hudson that's explained, we have approval from the village pending the hearing that because of the coronavirus, et cetera, we're not sure when this will happen, could we submit this for them?
We couldn't call it approval, we couldn't call it approval. I mean, we could take a straw vote, which is basically just to get an opinion of everybody tonight. Do you see any issue, you know, and you could certainly give them the, you know, you could say that, you know, just took a straw vote, because we have to hold a public hearing. Question is when we can do a public hearing, especially public being the operative word now. Are people comfortable with just a straw vote?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, so.
I don't see anything.
Yeah, I mean, assuming the, I would, I would think the only thing that could come up in a public hearing would be, oh, we, you know, are you throwing light onto my property? Are you throwing, but you're, it's such a large property, I don't know where that would really even be happening. And if it is, I'm sure you're gonna be sensitive to it anyways. So at the public hearing, we would say, you know.
I mean, the construction guys left one of their lights on. And my neighbor called me and said, hey, the light was on, it was shining in my bedroom. I said, oh gosh, I asked the construction guys, they said, gosh, we're really sorry, and so.
A light inside the house?
No, 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 they had a spotlight, because they were doing something when it was before daylight.
Oh, they were lighting the outside?
On the outside, and the guys forgot the light on. And the neighbor called and we said, gosh, we're sorry, and it never happened again. I mean, people seem to feel perfectly comfortable calling us when there's.
Yeah, and that's the only thing I foresee, and that's, and that's not something that's going to be happening in the future. Obviously, that, that kind of high level lighting is really, so somebody can see when there's.
I was just saying an example that, you know, people feel.
But who knows, I mean, you could, it's odd, the, the angle and the, you know, and the spillover of light, that, you know, you couldn't even perceive it. On such a large property, you're set towards the front of the lot, you know, more than the back of the lot, I don't think there're gonna be issues. So I would certainly vote in favor of it. You know, not, you know, not, with the understanding that we'd have to hear the public comment. I doubt, I would doubt that. I doubt, I would doubt that, because I would doubt that there's anything in the public comment that you're not gonna be able to address.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so, you know, so we, um, so it's basically just a straw vote, which basically is just kind of to get a temperature, uh, but for, you know, for in favor, and not against.
Right, thank you very much.
It's not likely that anything's gonna come up that you're not gonna be able to address, I really only think the only thing they're gonna be able to talk about is light spillover, because you can't really talk about noise, I mean, noise is what it is, we have noise ordinances, right? It's a private house too, you know, you're allowed to enjoy your property, other people are allowed quiet enjoyment, but we have noise, noise ordinances, I don't know when it is, eleven o'clock, nine o'clock, what is ours? Eleven, yeah, it's late, so.
Eleven.
Party on.
No worries.
Alright, very good, thank you so much. Yeah, and if they need to, if they, if they, if they're more comfortable, I mean, I, um, who do you, who do you speak with? Do you speak with one person?
Who do we speak with at Sinek Hudson? Um, there is a woman by the name of Sarah, who management, manages our conservation easements, but she's kind of the organizer person, and then she bubbles it up to multiple layers.
Okay, yeah, so if they, if they, if they for some reason just wanna speak to me, that's perfectly fine to, to shoot me an email, and I'll give them a call, just to say, listen, it's a special situation, we don't wanna hold you up.
Thank you very much, that'd be great, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, absolutely, great, good, good, place looks great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
How much more, how much more work do you have?
We're hoping.
Oh, nice, and you, are you guys living there yet, or?
No.
Not yet.
No. You can't live in a house when you don't have an occupancy permit.
Oh, good point, well, that was not a trick answer, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was phased, I didn't know if it was phased.
That's a no-no.
And did you do an interior, interior restoration of the, of the original interiors, they're in a nice shape, yeah.
Yes, we restored everything, have, um, custom made.
It's beautiful, how it's done.
Trim and absolutely followed the, everything to historically.
Oh, good, good, thank you so much, it's a great property, thanks for saving.
The main blow to our finances was that the beams that support the house were completely rotten. So we had to jack up the house and replace all the supporting beams.
Yeah.
And you're just gonna have to trust me, that really hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a lot.
I had to do that, our cottage was like that, but it was small enough that it wasn't so painful, but that's a lot more.
And we'd had architects and engineers and lots of people who evaluated, everybody said, no, no, it's sound, it's great, it's structurally fine, and.
They all missed it, yeah.
And, um, you know, you could put a pocket knife in, it felt like butter.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
Was it insects or just rot?
Uh, termites and rot, they, termites like.
Soft.
Soft, and they had covered it with those asbestos shingles in the fifties, which made sure that the moisture stayed inside and rotted really nicely.
So you had compost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Alright, well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Hey guys, how are you?
Hi.
Come on up. So, we'll go on to, uh, the Foodtown Shopping Plaza, uh, you clean this up for us. So we have this, thanks for restoring our file document. Since ours was a little snow.
A little shady.
So, I think that, so I went to the village board on Tuesday on your behalf to ask, you know, I said, would you be interested in selling it? They said they'd be, they'd consider it, there's really no, you know, they didn't shoot it down, so that's a, that's a start. But they would, as we would, they, I think we need an updated survey, or at least a survey, I'm, Beatty and Watson may have one, I don't, I would be surprised if back in two thousand and three, they didn't do a new one. So if you can get a survey, um, and then you would go to them with the survey and talk to them about this land, um, I don't, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna get a bunch of variances, cause you're, I think, your property line on this end is tight, right? Is it only ten feet, is it a ten foot setback?
Yeah.
And thirty feet on the other side, so in the B two, this is B two, right? Yeah, I think it's B two, you have to keep one twenty foot side yard, so, it's not that one, so that's gotta stay at least twenty feet.
Okay.
So you can bump that way a little bit, I don't know how much that helps you, so you have this bumped out here, right? No, or is it here?
That's right.
Yeah, it's here, so, and then the wall was still here.
It's just a fence, it's not.
But it's off your property, yeah, that's the problem, is that you, you know, you're building stuff onto property that you don't own, and reducing the setback, I think this, I think the rear yard, oh Christ, I think it's thirty feet.
Twenty-five or thirty, is it different for commercial?
The B two, yeah.
Oh, B two.
So, but, but again, you have a approved site plan, so there's nobody, you know, nobody gets to take back.
Okay.
Right, if the, you know, if you, but if you reopen it, the planning boards are required to fix prior mistakes, you don't wanna reopen, um, or I personally wouldn't want to reopen a lot, cause then you kind of, you kind of have to go backwards. Like this, this was surprising to them that this was on, was on the site plan, but you know, you've got this stamp, you've got the planning board chair's signature, so I mean, this is approved, it's not, there's no worry there.
Okay.
One potential solution, um, and I don't know what's going on with Angelina's, other than kind of continuing to creep out, um, out of the space. You know, it, this obviously is not permitted, and so if the, if the stuff, you know, in the interim could be moved up onto the deck, I realize you've already built the block wall, you'd have to take the block wall down, and possibly put the fence gates there, to put the, you know, put the dumpsters up there.
Yeah, the problem is this is, this is like a ten inch step that goes up to here, it's like part of the.
Right, right, yeah.
It's a step, like you can't roll anything.
They, they're not rolling, I think, I think, are those things picked up with forklifts and flipped? Typically, they've got slots on the side, and they're just tip, they're, you know, the slot, you know, the, the tines go in, and it flips them over, so, but, we don't have, I, I don't, unless the board feels otherwise, we don't have to, you know, address this immediately, but it does have to be addressed.
Okay.
You can't, we can't build new stuff and show it on a site plan.
Right.
And it'll, it's on property that isn't even owned by, by you.
I just kinda thought, since this was already done.
Yeah, it, yeah, that might.
What's the difference?
It, yeah, that might, yeah, I mean, and, you know, it's, it's not completely unreasonable to think that there's some sort of, there's some sort of a reason for that line.
Yeah, no, it wasn't meant to like, yeah.
But, without question, we can't update your site plan, showing stuff, you know, going up, cause the fence is a, it's an installation, um, no different than we're just speaking to Twenty the Boulevard, it's an encroachment. Um, if the village doesn't cure it within the statute of limitations of trespass, you can then say, oh, now I own this, right? So, and the planning board doesn't wanna help that kind of mess along, so, i- i- if you could look into putting it up here, what it, and then there's also the issue of the, of the refrigerator, that was never approved either, that I think Angelina's put out there, with the shed roof over it. I don't know what, I don't know, that, for, as far as code enforcement, that's up to code enforcement, you're within the site, um, I don't, it can't possibly be H D R B that far, is it? So, I don't know, has it, did anybody make it there?
I did.
You did?
I do it by.
Let me, I'll show you some pictures.
It looks like the back of Foodtown.
Yeah.
It is cleaned up, thank you, I mean, it is, yeah.
There's talent out there, I think.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a, it's, it's hard to keep your, uh.
Yeah, it is.
We're that tenant of about eighteen locations, and trust me, keep after our people.
But the gates, you know, are there, and they're covering it up.
Yeah. No, like I said, we do appreciate what you're trying to do, we just, we just wanna make sure that we don't get too far, you know, anywhere.
Let me talk to the, the building, see if.
Okay.
If we can purchase this, I can't imagine them asking too much for it.
So this is the. So this is the, can you see this, this, well, you're, you're familiar with it, right?
Yeah, the, the back of Foodtown, I might walk through it, maybe.
So, okay, so.
So that's the part that's.
Yeah, so that's this, you know.
Right.
Permitted.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, uh, it'd be a code enforcement issue, I mean, it's on the, you know, the, I don't think it's really a planning board issue.
What, the refrigerator?
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't think it is, I mean, I think we can lift up the fact that, hey, we observed that there is a refrigerator, and there's a shed roof that's been built off the building.
Yeah, he did this on his own one, like a few years ago, and.
Now.
We didn't really, uh.
And this is the.
You didn't tell him to take it down.
I didn't.
And this is the enclosure that was built for the dumpster and the grease dumpster.
Can you see?
And so the, the fence is, is that fence?
Yeah, that was all gonna get, all that was gonna get scraped and repainted, and the fence was gonna get repainted, and then, um, I mean.
Why is he parking this thing here, a few of ten feet?
I don't, I think Louis' property goes all the way up against the building, I don't think he has.
It's the, it's the other, the other guy.
It's Louis, it's Lu, the building.
Why'd he do this? Make sure a ten foot dimension line from here to, here to what?
Is that a reference line? Because I had.
Yeah.
Within the last, I don't know, I wanna say, within the last eighteen months, I feel like, I feel like I heard somebody say to me, like, oh, somebody was thinking that, well, oh, they might, you know, expand the, the building all the way, and I was like, is the.
On the other side.
Is the lot line all the way, no, I, I thought it was, I thought it was Louis', I didn't, I don't know.
Yeah, oh, what's this?
Guess what's going on?
This is the, the plan that I submitted.
When?
Last, last time. You guys have.
The previous one. Oh, 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 I see, here we are, down front, okay. That's the.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That's a little problematic, this is the lot line, and it's right against the.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
It is right against the building, that is why he's parking his.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he seems to feel a certain, you know, differently, yeah.
Well, he, he does feel, okay, because it, because he is. So, um.
Alright, so, I guess check to see if you've got a survey, there's probably gotta be a file survey.
Yeah, I'm sure, my dad has one.
There has to be, I mean, I don't, and, and look, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen years old is not that big of a deal for a survey, especially if it was done for this rebuild.
Right.
Anything going back any further probably would be, not be great, you'd wanna get something that had something to do with setting out the four corners of this building, and then all the parking, and, so that way then, it's, it's related to this.
Okay.
And. And then we're gonna, we'd have to look into, I don't know that that really's, it, it doesn't eliminate all the issues, because you, you still can't run all the way to Marion, I mean, you can't, you can't have no setback. I, I think that, let me just look, I think I'm pretty sure it's a thirty foot rear yard in a, in a, in a B two.
Does it go from the middle of the road, or?
Oh, no, it's the back.
No, no, the, the property line, property line itself, yeah.
I don't even think, I mean, I don't think.
If it's thirty, let me, let me check, um, so the B two. But. You know, you could go to the Z D A. Though I imagine the village board will be trying to anticipate that, when they decide whether or not they wanna sell, right? Cause they're gonna be worried about what, what is actually gonna happen there, you know? Christ, it's everywhere, index.
Oh, B two?
You know, I wonder if I can maybe put it in over here. I could just take this and put it right there, I have to go over there later and check that out.
Is that B nine?
I, I feel like if you can get everything inside this plane, not this, obviously, and that's already approved, if you can get it up inside here, I, you, you should look at those dumpsters, the way most dumpsters are handled, nobody.
It would be to the right of the existing.
Nobody's rolling that dumpster, cause you couldn't pick it up.
Right.
Right, so it's gotta be picked up mechanically, typically, they have slots, you know, tubes on the, on each side of them, the tines go into those slots, and then they flip it over, and they dump it. Um, not sure about grease, I don't know if maybe they use a hose to pump it out, I don't know if that, I can imagine trying to flip that thing.
Yeah, they use holes, yeah.
But nevertheless, it wouldn't matter that it's on a pad, it, it wouldn't matter that it's on a pad.
Sometimes they, there's like people that steal it now, they.
Oh, right, for bio diesel, yeah. So, that makes sure, uh, cause I'm not so sure, I don't really see. I don't know that the village board is gonna, is gonna be so quick to sell this, um, they may or may not, I don't know, but it's, but they said they'd be open to it, you'd have to have a current survey, go talk to them. But that doesn't necessarily mean, nor does I think it, nor would I even guess that it's gonna end with. Yeah.
I think that if you can, if you can do it within the envelope that you have.
Yeah.
That should, that's gonna be most expeditious, yeah.
I think you would just save yourself money and time, and also, just a lot of.
You gotta have, but you gotta get an attorney and do a closing, and, you know, and it's just, it's also, and I think all you're really gonna do then is become the owner of a strip of land that you can't put anything on. Because I'm pretty sure, it, here's, I feel like, if we change a lot of things, then we probably ought to have you show us a truck turn radius study, a traffic study. Can you really back a, you know, tractor trailer, um, does this, does this, does this.
Can you really see that thing anyway?
Yeah, does this.
Right, 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 right.
And I think these things already answer themselves, that you probably, it came up in Butterfield, right? Butterfield wanted to move the post office from a building that was already, that was already, you could circle around with a trailer, to a building that you had to back in. You know, so it said, then you gotta show us a truck turn radius study and a traffic study to show that this can actually be done, because the last thing you want is like, you know, some trucks getting stuck, um, which is happening back there, right? Maybe it's the truck drivers, maybe it's the site, maybe it's a combination of both, but, um, I think the most expeditious thing is, as Stephanie was saying, and what we're saying really physically, to get it back.
The only thing is, uh, there's a basement, I believe.
Dude, I, I wasn't even aware of that, is there, is a partial basement?
Yeah, from, uh, Foodtown space over.
I didn't know they had a basement, did you know that?
Yeah, I didn't know.
So the, yeah, so the back.
And that was built, that was built recently, when we.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
After the fire.
After the fire, yeah, Foodtown wanted it, cause they wanted the space.
Nice, okay.
Well, everybody, everybody wants space back there, you can tell.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, no, I don't think it's gonna work here, cause this is, um, these are basement windows.
Their vents, their grates, their, their grates that are ventilation down to the windows, yeah.
Ventilation and, and light.
Okay, well, and why can't it go up on the pad behind the people that are using it?
Well, that's, you know, there's doors, you know.
There's, there's right here, there's space, I mean, I, I don't understand right now, there's a, a wall there, but that, that.
Yeah, maybe the wall comes down, and you just stick it right here, and.
Yeah, the block wall, cause this, you didn't have a permit for this anyway, so you gotta, we'll have to look at that.
Actually, you built that for screening.
For screening, yeah.
Yeah. To like.
I mean, you do have room.
I'll have to find another spot for it.
I mean, you do have room here, cause you've got a thirty foot, you have to make.
Also, by, by not pursuing this, it just also means that you're not holding it up to.
Right.
Commentary from the people who are already have voiced some concerns about, so, if you can, hey, hey, if you can like move it down Marion, around the corner, to another, another location.
Yeah, and you obviously, you've got, you've got this and this, you know, obviously, I don't wanna go too much towards the front, cause it starts to get, but, um, like this, I don't know what.
It might make sense to have Foodtown put like a compactor here, in this area, and we'll see, you know, close that up, and then use this area, half of this area for them.
Yeah.
Oh, is that.
Take a look at that, that's gonna be a heck of a lot faster and cheaper than trying to purchase a strip of land that's not, I don't believe you're actually gonna be able to use it anyway.
Right.
Because I think it's gonna open up a whole can of worms of, of clearances and truck traffic and radiuses.
I don't know, you never know, it's worth the, uh, exploration.
No, no, absolutely, no, 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 it's definitely worth, no.
If they said, oh, for five thousand dollars, you know, we'll take it off our tax roll.
Yeah.
I'll take it, and then, but then, you're, like you said, you would have to get lawyers involved, and.
Yeah, you'd have to contract your sale, you'd have to close it, yeah.
And also, if, um, I, you know, I, I was just thinking about the, the, we were talking about shrub, shrubs and stuff, but then.
Yes, that's, I am doing that next week.
Well, but, my concern though was, of a sudden was like, well, oh no, wait, if, maybe, maybe shrubs aren't a good idea, because they'll get in the way of, you know, delivery, traffic, and I don't know. I mean, your shrubs, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not permanent, you know, they're, they're sitting there, you know, so if somebody says to move them, you can move them, um, don't, I wouldn't show them on the drawing, when we get there.
Nah.
Dolly's.
Um, yeah. But yeah, why don't, you want, you wanna look to that and get back to us?
Yeah, yeah, let me, um, let me explore that a little bit.
Okay. Okay, great.
I'll get back to you guys.
Perfect, great, you need anything else from us, or?
No.
Okay, good, thank you so much for coming in.
So, uh, let's, how do I?
Well, so you don't, you don't wanna go to the village board, yeah, I mean, we'll, yeah, again, not, we're not quite sure when we're gonna meet next, but we'll, uh, I'll be in touch by email.
Okay, so just.
I'll speak to the village, the village attorney as to how much we can do, we do have to assemble, um, I don't think there's such thing as, you know, videoing an entire board. You can, you can, you can participate by, by a video conference, we have to be in a publicly accessible space, so I don't know what that really means.
Even when, even though you're.[1785.93]
Keep your social space.
It's on a screen in the public meeting.
Okay, do like a group, uh, Facebook.
Yeah.
We, we could do group G chat.
But it would have to exist here, you'd have to have a screen here that's public to come to, and you, and the people all shown on the screen that's sitting there have to all be in a publicly accessible space.
Oh, physically?
Yeah, if they then want to come see you there, they have to be able to see, come to you.